Good evening, the planning board meeting on Tuesday, February 2nd will come to order. There are two public hearings that will be continued, 2302 Turnpike Street and 1665 Great Pond Road, they'll both be deferred until March 1st. And did you say the bond thing we weren't going to do, did I miss that?
We're going to do the bond.
Oh, we are going to do the bond, so we'll go right to that right now, so what do we got?
So Staten Woods was a nine lot subdivision approved in 2011. The locus, just to refresh everybody's memory, the subdivision comes in off of Bradford Street, the original parcel was 1679 Osgood Street. All homes have been constructed and sold. Tim Willett has presented a revised bond sheet, and he's in recommendation of $100,000 release of the roadway bond. This subdivision has not had any partial reductions to date, so the original bond was There is also a site opening bond and a common driveway bond, one's 15 and one's five, that I am recommending release of. The applicant has already submitted a street layout plan, and as-built plan, he intends to move forward with street acceptance.
A town meeting?
Yep. It's going to be a tight deadline now, but he has all the material and is working towards that. The health department has signed off on all septic systems that were constructed. The applicant has submitted a certification letter from the engineer for each of the individual nine lots, certifying they were built according to the site plan, the definitive plan. And so I am in support of the $100,000, reduction in the roadway bond, the common driveway special permit bond of $5,000, and site opening bond of 15.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
The developer, Michael Green, is here.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Would somebody then like to release, let's do it in pieces, I think separate votes will be a little bit easier.
We release the $100,000 of the roadway bond for Staten Woods.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and the second, what is the release of the common driveway bond?
Is that all of the bond that's?
Common driveway is $5,000.
We'll just say the entire bond, including interest.
Yes, that is the entire bond.
Yeah. So you're going to make that motion, Dave, that you release the $5,000, the entire amount including accrued interest?
Is there accrued interest?
There will be.
Yeah.
No, no, but yes, the $5,000.
Will we release the $5,000 plus any accrued interest for Staten Woods for the roadway bond? Common driveway?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, and last is the site opening bond.
About the $15,000, is that the entire?
That's principal, there'll be associated interest that can be released as well.
Will we release the site opening bond, the amount of $15,000 plus any accrued interest for Staten Woods?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
By the way, just to comment, is, I know that subdivision took a long time to come together, but it's actually turned out pretty nice, I think you did a nice job.
Thank you, thank you. We, a lot of effort went into make it work. The original people that did the plan, it was, we thought what you thought. But it took a lot of sloping grading.
They were really, really responsive with us, they were very good to deal with. Okay, 1812 Turnpike Street, this is the proposed auto repair facility with the attached pizza restaurant. Steve Hayes here, there has been a lot of dialogue between Lisa Eggleston and Steve.
So let's, we'll do the engineering stuff first, and then we'll talk about the building again, if we're ready to talk about that too, or are we just going to talk about the one?
I think if Steve could provide, when do the site plan changes relative to Lisa's comments and the O&M plan?
Yep. So from our last meeting, we had met, not met actually, we corresponded with Lisa quite a number of times, she'd sent a review letter up, we had revised, there's only one real substantive change relative to the design, and that design was that the pavement, the proposed pavement from the front part of the building in the rear parking lot turned into porous pavement to meet the 100-year storm event requirements. So we also had submitted an O&M manual, stormwater maintenance manual, to go along with that, and all the other documentation she had asked for. We did get a response letter back from her the other day, I think you might have that email. We had taken care of her concerns with those revisions, and you have these revised plans, they were revised January 27th. So those, the plans dated January 27th show all of the changes, and again, there were only two minor changes on that plan particularly, from Lisa's comments, and then the other one was the comment letter that she sent out on Monday, which was six items? Eight items. And so I talked with her, and in green, I don't know if yours came in color, but we have really no issues with any of the comments that she had made. We're updating the, the first one was, she's recommending that when we go to construction, that we do some test pits in the infiltration basin and in the area of the porous pavement sections, and we have no problem with that, and that'll just prove, correspond, prove the depth of groundwater that we're looking for. Infiltration information relative to the second item, it was a spot shot, what we're talking about there is, is just beefing up the information on the grading plan to show that, again, in a 100-year storm event, if the water were happening in that infiltration basin, would in fact come back into the parking lot, and it actually shows on our grading plan, but we're just going to, we're going to call it out with a note right on the drawing, more so than we already did. She and I talked about the cars for repair, again, George does all his repairs inside, and we're going to designate that the parking spaces out front on the standard pavement is where, if you're going to drop off your car, it sits there, it gets repaired, it gets parked out back, you come pick up your car and you leave. So in the porous pavement sections, you know, using that as the storage for repaired cars and moving out.
So the response that you see says pervious, and that was in error, that has been corrected since then?
While you're on that, how are you going to designate it? Because you can't park on the pavement. Are you going to have signs? I mean, someone pulling into the lot wouldn't know, and they're not, if you say you can't park on the porous pavement.
Yeah, we'll have.
You don't know what porous pavement is.
Well, true, but when they come in, the front is where, they're going to come into the office anyways, they're going to park out front. So if they park out front, that's where they're going to, that's where they'll leave their vehicle. So when George, when they, when they, when they discuss that with George, I'm dropping my car off, yes, she'll park out in front. So they won't have access to the rear of the parking lot, that's what I'm saying.
But how will they not have access, that's my point. How would you stop someone who's pulling in, who just comes in and pulls to the left and pulls out back? I'm a person who parks far away, because I don't want my car being dinged, so I'm just curious, are you going to have some sort of signage, or?
I didn't really think that would be necessary, but we can put a sign that says no unauthorized access to the real lot, or something like that.
Is the real lot, is that the plan, is just to have those are the finished cars?
Yep.
Yeah, I think maybe a do not enter sign.
One-way.
Or a do not enter, or something like that, you know?
We can do that. Yeah, we'll do something like that, but.
Yeah, because I'm just.
The guy who comes to pick up the garbage, they're going to know, go get our garbage.
Yeah, I mean, the garbage guy, I would think, would ignore, you know? We have people ignore do not enter sign as it is.
Yeah. Well, in this case, it doesn't really lend itself to, I'm going to go drive around back, but I like that idea.
There's no door for people to go in, and then they might walk.
No, but they might.
I'm just saying that, you know? Cars, you've got cars, like, oil, you know?
If, well, the front access, where they're going to come into the office is out front, but no problem, we can put a, if everyone's in agreement, do you want to put do not enter on that?
That looks fine.
Okay.
Or employee only access, or something like that you could do.
That's even better. Employee access only.
Yeah. Or authorized vehicles only.
Authorized vehicles would be better, because you've got the dumpster people and whatever.
See, we think of, we'll get something better.
You have no problem with that, absolutely. Assigned, okay, that's okay. The six-inch drain, what we're talking about here is down in this area here, the existing six-inch drain comes in through here and drains out that way, and that's actually the drain for the entire site. So as part of the O&M manual, we're going to beef up the, the understanding, and George is owning this, and that's why he's here. So he knows he has to maintain that and clean that, so it's not like it's, it's something he could potentially forget, but anyways, that's, the rest of these comments refer specifically to the operation and maintenance meeting for the stormwater control.
Is the drain on this property, or is it easement needed, or no?
No, it's on our property, actually. It's on our property, so, but talking to the owner and the real estate person as well, and just see if there was actually something in writing. Right now, the property that we are, that George is potentially going to own, had granted a parking and driveway easement to that parcel, so it's got to be a cross easement associated with that. So the bottom line is, he has to maintain that, that culvert he's got him. But make no mistake, we're talking about 100-year storm event numbers, and that's what we designed it to, and even with those numbers, they're, they're as negligible as you can get relative to the software that we use for, for design, but like, he's got to maintain it anyways, and that's what these last six, seven, eight, and nine, or six, seven, and eight are about, just making sure the notes are definitive in the O&M manual, so that becomes part of the plan. And we have no problem with any of those, we talked those over with Lisa.
Will any of this be added on the deed? Any of the requirements stay on the O&M plan? I'm thinking that George can maintain it now, but then perhaps sell the business, and how will the person buying know? I mean, we don't have in the town, you know, somebody who inspects.
Yeah, but see, the use could change, you don't want to, you don't want to pin a deep restriction to a use that is variable, I think you just have to follow regular practice, you know?
Which is.
But the drain.
Hope it doesn't happen.
No, the decision references the O&M plan, so the decision is recorded.
That's true.
So there is a restriction that's recorded, it's public.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah, so, but if the decision gets updated, then the O&M plan would get changed, with a different use, so that covers what you're saying.
I always think of Richard Rollins, he would always say, you know, we shouldn't have conditions that there's no way to enforce, because there's.
But there's enforcement, because the decision's recorded. So that's the same thing as a deed restriction.
Yeah, I know, but there's nobody in the town to be sure that the thing is maintained.
But make no mistake, it's in his best interest to maintain it. I mean, he, you know, he has to do that, one, it's his business, and two, you don't want to redo anything up here, and so.
But I think the question is if he sells the business, and it's not in his interest.
Yeah, but.
Well, the other decision, yeah, the decision is recorded, and the decision, we always reference the date in the O&M.
The decision runs over the land, and if there's a change of use, it could likely trigger them to come back again anyways.
Yeah, anyway, yeah.
So Lisa would have to see the revised plan and the O&M before final sign-off, but she was good with the responses, that they could be accounted for. The only one she cautioned me that we should include in the decision is not only when it's as-built times at certification, that it was constructed correctly, but that the stormwater management system was functioning as designed. So she thought it was just such a tight calculation for all these areas, we'd want to ensure that it's actually functioning to the design as well, and that's not typical in our decisions.
The only, which I have no problem with, it makes sense, just understand that when functioning, it's designed for a 100-year storm event, so.
So since you're just, you're going to say what you say, we'll have one tomorrow.
So I would hope, I would hope we would have something to be able to balance that against, but just, yeah, so, not that it matters much, but.
No, but through the course of construction, there's going to be different storm events or whatnot, and they should be able to certify it.
Yep.
And I guess you can just reference the state permit, you still need to apply.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. So the only, the only state permit we need is, is the access permit, because we have an existing water service on-site, but we're going to abandon that, and the water department wants us to, to take that all the way back and remove it at the corporation, at the water main. The water main is actually in the state highway, so we're filing an access permit for that. So that, that we're filing this week, and we would hope to get that, I don't know how long it's going to take, but we hope to get it.
And you don't need a permit for a curb cut, because you're using the existing.
That's exactly right. So we did talk to them ahead of time, we sent them a plan, had some feedback from them as well, that's exactly what came out with, so. So that's really the only state permit we need.
Do you want to show the sign rendering, or?
We, you wanted to see what the sign was going to be, again, it has to meet zoning, everything else, kind of came up with an idea of this, just, one, something fairly, fairly nice.
This is your freestanding.
That's the freestanding sign, location.
And what are the pillars made of?
Make them out of anything you want.
Not.
Titanium.
Ain't it white?
Granite posts, or?
Yeah, I know, we don't give them that kind of attitude, I get it, but granite, granite post, something that's going to look nice.
Something like that, I mean, that's fine, I think it's simple, tasteful, you know, a wood, a like wood thing on a granite post would be perfect.
How many tables are you going to have? How many seats, I guess?
Right now, let me count. I think we had 12.
12 seats?
Yeah, it's mostly, it's not big enough for anything more than that, it's kind of a takeout, get in and get out.
I don't remember now, but it's referenced on the plans, and the factoring calculation was not based on.
Do you have a time for that, space yet, or is?
15.
Your, your, you don't have to say who or what, it's not just curious.
George has that conversation with people, but I don't think you've got a commitment yet, I mean, not, not yet. So anyway, so the iteration of the plans had gone through, we submitted those, Lisa's gone through those, we updated those plans, which you now have, all the minor items. Most of the comments, the last comment she had was fix the item for that infiltration base on the side, as well as just update the O&M manual, which we're working on right now. We do have the access permit to file four, and I think that's mostly it, relative to the building, the building rendering that we'd had, I thought we'd kind of come to the final conclusion on that. You had a suggestion relative to the look in the front, and we changed that, so it's not off-center, just kind of keep that. But in terms of the colors, it's going to look like the one next door, I didn't bring, I didn't bring it, because I thought we were kind of done with it, so I apologize.
You're going to be our design consultant, so make sure it needs your approval.
Sorry, so I did not have the final meeting, and I think you were making it was met with it, so if you could send that to the.
Yeah, I can send that to you.
I can send that off to you, if you want to have a little look at that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I thought we had a good discussion, and I think we came to an understanding, if you could just be our agent to make sure we got that, that'd be great.
Well, so this, so what, the question was on the upper elevation, where you see the brick going to the roof line, what we've done is we've eliminated that, so it maintains the same constant brick across there, so you don't have that shooting up to the top of the roof anymore, it just goes right across at the same elevation to the lower, lower windows, so you don't have a, it doesn't break it up.
Yep.
And I looked at trying to move it to the other side, over the door, but because of the overhead door, it doesn't work, so I just eliminated the brick above the overhead door, and it just straight across.
Personal comment, gray and beige don't go together. I know you can get garage doors in any color.
We have no problem with that?
I don't really care, but I'm just saying, aesthetically, those don't.
I think.
I agree, can we make that beige? We're going to be picky about it. Is the roof red?
No.
Why don't you do maroon and match the brick?
Potentially not, the brick might be reddish in color.
It's going to be more reddish in color, it's going to be looking like the one next door.
It might not be exact.
I don't care.
Okay, all right, so if you guys are good with that, do we need to talk about that anymore?
Nope, I think we're good.
With that, so what do we want to do going forward? So we would come back, if I can get everything to Lisa this week?
I think we can vote next time, I think we should be in good shape. Get the stuff in, we'll keep the hearing open, just in case we have to bring everything into the record, but we'll, we're planning on voting and giving a decision next meeting.
Okay.
Just back on the O&M plan, on number six, where it says you'll put it in the O&M plan about no stop down snow, we usually require signage, so that way the snow contractor at 3:00 in the morning knows where not to put the snow either. The other snow contractor. Usually see the no stop pile and signs for snow, you know? That's usually the standard, is, you know, we'll see if it ever works in town.
Do you want me to add another sign?
Yeah, I'm not a big key with signs, it's more that you designate the area.
But if it's, but if he's doing it, I don't care, yeah, but usually if you have a different contractor, they never know what.
Yeah, in this case, you are going to do it yourself, so just as long as you designate that, no sign, but just designate the area.
All right, so, all right, so we understand what Lisa's asked us to do, I have no problem with those, we've identified that, we'll update the drawing one more time, we'll get that back to Lisa, we'll get the O&M back to her as well. We're done with the pictures, I'm, I'll send you this, this rendering, without the brick going above that, on that elevation, just for your record as well. This, this is a sketch for discussion purposes, we're pretty sure it's going to be something like this, but it'll meet zoning, and ultimately it'll be a professional sign that gets put in place. And anything else that we need to know or talk about, and if not, we can?
No, we're all good, we all know what the landscaping's going to be, the access is going to be, the lighting is going to be, so we get everything.
Okay, all right, so we'll come back next week for, no, two weeks, two weeks, for hopefully Any questions for me, or? Okay, I'm good, thank you.
Any other comments, or? No, okay, sorry, please do not.
Do you need to borrow this?
Mine?
I'll have to come back and pick it up, I'll pick it up tomorrow.
That's fine.
It would be awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, you're in.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, 101115 Sutton Hill Road.
Yep, okay.
Again, it's kind of in the same condition, where Lisa's done a lot of review, it's very close to be finalized, there was actually emails back and forth late today, so you have a point in time today, a hard copy, I believe, and Jack Sullivan's looking to, I believe, recalculate based on the correct 100-year storm requirements, as opposed to the data submitted, would really account for a 35-year storm. So that is still in the works. At the last meeting, we had a lot of discussion, we got in the tandem driveway at the intersection of Sutton Hill Road, and the building code, as it relates to driveways, will actually houses that exist at 50 feet or more from the roadway. So Tom has updates to both those comments, I think if we start with the roadway and the driveways.
Okay. The, we provided more detail, mostly I think John in response to your comments or inquiries about the, how the driveway access would look. The previous plan, or the original plan was not quite as detailed, but you can see, if you've, if you had the opportunity to look at it, it's, again, it's a, it's a common curb cut that extends as a common, as a common roadway surface, paved surface, to the edge of the right-of-way. It splits into two separate driveways at the edge of the right-of-way.
So John, if you look up here.
So while it's in the right-of-way, John, while it's in the right-of-way, it's a single, a single access, 20 feet wide, and then once it gets to the edge of the right-of-way, where they would be if they continued contiguous, they'd be considered common driveways, they split right there. So there's no common driveway element, it's a common access, common curb cut. Again, this is the same thing we've done a number of times in the past, it works great where I am on Great Pond Road, and it simplifies and consolidates any, you know, any vehicle access points, so that there's no, no new traffic patterns introduced at the site at Furthermore, we forgot the NFPA 1, mostly in response, I think, to your, your comments, and in general, we showed through dash lines, which you can see in color here, but you can also see on the enlarged plan there, showed the, if in fact NFPA 1 requirements, which they do have to be met, and they have to be met one way or another. If they're met with sprinklers, that's, that's one option, but if they're met with enhanced access per NFPA 1 standards, then that means you have to have a 20-foot roadway access, which, which we can do in these cases, and we've shown on the plan, where we would do that and how we would do it.
Well, let me ask you this, just sort of from a general perspective, you're obviously, when you say 20, you're not going to make it a 20-foot paved thing, right?
No, doesn't make sense to, I mean, first of all, that's environmentally irresponsible, it's aesthetically ridiculous.
Yeah, but I mean, it would be ridiculous. Okay, so that's right, please, so what do you actually do then? Do you just, is it that you just make sure it's level?
No, you, no, you can't, you can't just use, you know, any material, you have to have a, what's called a wearing surface, a gravel, a prepared gravel, processed gravel surface, I think, I don't know, what is it, six or eight inches, there's a specification that you have to, that you have to comply with, and that's, that's a wearing surface that, you know, is supportive of a vehicle, supportive of.
Right, so, okay, so fair enough.
In fact, you know, I'll tell you, John, just so you know, I mean, the, the best scenario for that, as far as I'm concerned, in these kinds of applications, which NFPA 1 is sort of driving the bus on this a little bit, but if you have ever been out to Carter Field, which obviously it's a place I'm very proud of, but the overflow parking area to the right, there's a, there's a, you know, an exposed gravel parking area, that's the primary parking area, but there's an, there's a grassed parking area to the right of the lower field, and that has a prepared processed gravel base with a layer of loam on top, but that has grass growing on it, so it's a great.
Well, that actually answers, then, that answers my question, you could do that and still grass it over, because I thought you were going to, I was thinking 20 feet, effectively you have a 20-foot, I thought you were going to say, is it was going to be 10 feet paved, and then 5 feet of, like, stone on the other side, which is the same thing as 20 feet, so if you're saying you can create that and grass it, then?
Well, the best example that I have of it is what we actually did, and put it in practice.
Okay, so you can do that?
Absolutely.
Okay, fine, that's all, that's all.
Yeah, and that has functioned for 15 years very well.
Yeah, okay.
Well, the fire department did something similar, the fire station, remember they used the grass papers?
Yeah, yeah, oh, I, see, I learned something, I didn't know you could have something that was grassed but still had that, now I know, so. Okay, I don't have a problem with it.
That's the way that people should think about complying with this access.
That's a perfectly logical way to do it, then, got it, okay.
So in any event, other things that we did, so we talked about the driveways a little bit, I mean, Lisa did get back, since the hearing, Jack did provide more detailed drainage analysis, a comprehensive analysis to Lisa, she provided some comments back. There was a little disconnect between the two of them about which data to use for the 100-year storm, Lisa had some more, some more current climate results that were, that were preferred, Jack saw those this afternoon, he already recalculated, sent those back to Lisa, it's kind of, it's really just a math problem, it's not a technical issue. The stone area around these dry wells has to be 72 inches of stone rather than 60 inches of stone, just for the additional capacity, because the 100-year storm event sometime in recent years went from 6.4 inches up to 7.6 inches or something like that, so there's a little bit more capacity. He's already sent that, those revisions back to, back to Lisa, she hasn't had a chance to get back to them, but it's purely a, you know, mathematical equation of how much volume do you need to, do you need to provide for. So I think that, I think that was the only sort of outstanding thing with Lisa, she only had a few relatively small comments before, anyway. All of those items, like the erosion control, and that detail has all been added on the, on the official plan that was submitted a few days ago, so. We supplied some information to E.J. Folds at the police department, he had made a comment about site distance, we did some physical measures and provided him some information on that, and the calculations for the 30 mile an hour site and stopping distance that he was satisfied with. We supplied that correspondence to Gene as well, and we, as a courtesy, we told him that we would install, we always install construction signage when we're working on either side, warning of traffic turning and entering, that's standard practice anyway, but we told him that after we were done, we'd install a permanent sign on either end of that, that segment of the road, just to further warn people that, you know, that there's driveways and a curb ahead.
Okay, any questions on the board? Can you refresh my memory? My memory fails all the time. Is it, in this case, are you going to keep two existing houses, or just one?
Well, this, this was originally driven from Eddie Watson's older, older home.
Is it, in this case, are you gonna keep two existing houses or just one?
Well, this was originally driven from Betty Watson's older home, but when we added in the 115 Sutton Hill Road parcel to the subdivision plan, if you will, rather than the A and R plan that we had submitted some time ago, became part of the project. That house stays. Betty Watson's house, we're gonna be appearing at some point in front of the historic commission. You know, realistically, the house is in bad shape. If it has to be retained, then it'll be retained.
Okay, so there are two existing houses. You make, you're gonna keep one, you may not keep the other.
Yeah.
And then you're building two new houses.
That's right. The footprint, this existing older home, which we've got in the dashed yellow line here, is a relatively large footprint. I mean, it's pretty, the surface area of that footprint is essentially equivalent to the other houses that we planned to build.
Okay, I just wanted to remember, just in case everybody asks me again, so. Okay, so we should be ready to vote this one next time too?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Any other discussion about sprinklers or anything like that that we need to have? I mean, I wanna, I don't wanna...
Well, if you comply with the procedure...
Which we will.
If it's an either-or proposition, as you explained, that either you have the 20-foot or you put the sprinklers in. And you wanna do the 20-foot, then we should not have a problem with that. Lynn, you're the one who has...
It's just the only problem, just with the dashed line, I think you have to extend it out.
Which one, on what?
With existing older homes, you know, stay all curves down.
Well, you only have to get to within 50 feet. We're actually about 65 feet from the existing curve. So we only extended that. You only have to get to within 50 feet. And so we didn't wanna arbitrarily expand that wearing platform, if you will. You don't have to get right to the front door. You have to get within 50 feet.
You don't have to have a turnaround, I thought?
At some point, there are standards.
Yeah, I don't think you have a turn, you don't have the...
There are standards for the turnaround and we have to comply with it.
So I thought, Tom and I had had some discussion. Typically, when residential fire sprinkler systems are required, it's at the point of prior to the CO being issued. So what we talked about is if he's going to do the route of complying with the NAFP, we get a certified engineer letter saying that what has been constructed does comply with it. That we rely it and engineer certify it just like they would a lot.
Correct. The only thing is, if there is, if you end up going with the gravel sub base, then we've won it in the decision or the deed restriction. So the homeowner knows that they can't remove that 10 years down the road. Because they're not gonna know why that gravel's stuck underneath their grass and they're gonna dig it up and try to put shrubs there.
Well, I mean, that's a decision, I mean, I...
It's gonna have to, it will have to be, if that's the route you're going, when it has to be on record somewhere, that that exists just like the Lisa wants people to know where the dry wells are.
Yeah, I'm not sure, you know, I think in the long run, I'm not just thinking about this in terms of my own work here. I have to work a lot of more years and there's a lot of other people who are gonna have to contend with this too. I mean, I want the system or the process to work right, but I also don't wanna be redundant or anything. I mean, I'd like to, personally, I'd like to leave those, compliance with those standards to the...
When I'm saying compliance with those standards, we're just saying that if it's on, if you're gonna go that route, it's gonna have to be on the ASB and it's gonna have to be notified to the homeowner, just like the dry wells. The dry wells...
Well, I think that makes sense. That's fine.
I mean, why would you be opposed to that? I mean, letting a homeowner know that they can't dig it up later on?
No, not at all.
Okay.
I mean, I just...
Or plant shrubs or they'd have to maintain that wood, just like anything else.
It's really just a question of whether or not it needs to be in the decision that you have to, that they have to acknowledge that piece of the decision. It doesn't matter to me really, Lynn. I'm trying to keep it as simple as possible.
Yeah, I think that's simple, letting homeowners know, just like we say, no fertilizers even though it's in the bylaw, you know?
The other reason, just to get back to the existing home, the reason why we didn't elaborate on that accessway is it's an existing home. It doesn't need to, technically, if that stays, it doesn't need to comply.
Okay.
Because it exists.
Got it. Thanks, Tom. I think we're all good.
Okay.
I think we're all good.
Thank you, folks.
Okay, Gene, we're okay. We'll get to that for the next time, right? Shouldn't be an issue, so, okay. Moving right along. Let's do the one, because all the folks are here, so we'll do this first.
So 1679 Osgood Street, again, they're requesting to have a warrant article to allow the use of a landscaping contract yard type business on the Osgood Street stretch.
By S.P. By special permit?
Well, we're not asking for that.
So at the end of last meeting, my sense was that the, my take was, the sense of the board was of the three alternatives that were presented, that the board deemed the third, second alternative, which was by special permit, to be the one that they would most likely be in support of. So that's the one I presented tonight. Kevin Foley called me today and I think he has...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Kevin Foley, did you hear that, Chad Lala? You may recall when I first came before the board a couple of months ago, kinda looking for some direction from the board about perhaps sponsoring a warrant article to allow landscaping in the CDD3 zone as a matter of right because I understand at one time that that was a permitted use down there until a zoning change in 2007. There are three or four landscaping companies down that way. And of course, I drew up a warrant article allowing it as a permitted use and inadvertently stuck a piece of that in the retail section. The planner took that and made a couple of options. Option one would be to just allow it as a permitted use with some conditions. And option two was by a special permit. And I was here last meeting asking that the board consider, because we can live with option one. I mean, that, the permitted use with some conditions, screening and so forth to make sure that it's not an eyesore. But the board seemed like it was leaning more towards a special permit. And I think that option one that the planner came up with is really, you know, in terms of the extremes, allowing a permitted use without any conditions or allowing it by special permit are the two extremes. And option one is right in the middle. And so I'd ask the board to consider sponsoring that. I think it recognizes what is already going on down there. And it also, you know, in terms of my client's perspective, I can tell you that putting a warrant article on for a special permit, although that might be nice, there's no guarantee that he'll get a special permit even if the town meeting were to adopt the article. So I just ask that it be allowed by right.
Well, I mean, I'll tell you why I would prefer to do it as a special permit and what I think the implications of it'll be. It's actually really pretty simple. I think it has a much better chance of getting approved at town meeting if you make it subject to special permit than if you don't. To put it quite bluntly, I think it'll garner more support given that it's a balancing thing. If we were in a situation over there where, you know, granted, if the Osgood landing were taking off and, you know, people would avail themselves of the new zoning, but we set it up for a reason. And this gives, we think, anybody that has this problem an out that would enable, it would give the town a little bit of control over it. From a practical perspective, if, what would happen is if it passed, immediately the applicant, you could go apply and this is the group of people that you're gonna hear it in front of. And I think, I can't speak for everybody, but I think we're sympathetic to what's going on. So I think you're gonna have to, I don't think it's gonna create you a problem personally, and I think you're gonna be better off if you do it by special permit because you got a much better chance of getting it approved.
Well, I think he has, going back to his particular circumstance, which is the reason I'm here. He already owns the land. He already had a permit to put a building up. That building is already up. And so then if he wants to run a landscaping company out of that building now, he has to come back in front of the board. And if the board doesn't like the building that he put up, he's in, and I've heard the discussions about other people that have brought buildings in here. I think it is an issue. In terms of, in terms of gathering support at the town meeting, John, John, in terms of gathering support at the town meeting, it's been 20 years since I've made a pitch to the town meeting, but I'm more than happy, I'd rather work with the planning board. I'm more than happy to make a pitch to the town meeting to allow it as a, you know, by right without any conditions and...
But what if it fails?
Maybe it will.
And he's stuck.
Yeah, and you want us to oppose it?
No, I don't.
Well, then, I don't know. You're going down that path.
No, I came in to ask you to work with us. I mean, to see if...
Well, we are. We could've said, no, we don't want that use at all over there and it was inadvertently, and it was never...
Then we'll have to get our signatures and, I mean, I could've had that discussion with the first one.
But here's the problem you're gonna run into, is if you don't do it the way we wanna do it, you gotta get two-thirds of the votes.
Yep.
Okay? And if you go in a different direction of what we're proposing, you run the risk that we recommend unfavorably for it. And all it takes is one-third of the votes.
Right.
I guarantee you, if you go with special permit, the thing will get approved unanimously, there won't even be a discussion, won't it? I mean, because that's typically the way these minor zoning things have gone over the last five years. So you have a choice of rolling the dice about getting something approved or not, or getting something approved and that I think will be a slam dunk.
Look, I'm not coming in here and being ungrateful. I appreciate the time, that the planner has been very gracious. The board has listened to me, tried to make a pitch. My only pitch to you is that I wish you would allow it by right with the conditions that she put forward in the first option rather than a purely a special permit. Because of the circumstances that Mr. Lala finds himself in, where he already owns the land and already has the building up, I'm weary about, you know, because if it's only by special permit, this board can tell him to do whatever he wants to do if that building's already up. I mean, are we gonna start changing the building?
Why did that happen in that manner, though? Why did it happen in the reverse order?
I can tell you that I had nothing to do with him purchasing the property and I had nothing to do with him putting up the building. But that's the...
So he rolled the dice then, so we're, you're actually, you know...
Well, look, it is what it is, so. But you also have three or four other landscaping companies down there. So I think the board ought to recognize for the town of North Andover that that's what's operating down the CDD3 district. You know, that's really the area where landscaping companies exist. I know that there was probably some different vision back in 2007 when they changed the zoning, but they eliminated a use that was once there.
Well, I mean, it's fine, say what you will, but I think you're misreading the tea leaves really badly here on this one because we've come a long way to say, look, I think at the beginning of the start of this thing is, it's like, why? We have zoning, we put it in for a reason, we should keep it. And we said, no, that's really not fair in this case because of the given use, the, what's going on? Let's go back. And this was the accommodation we read and we think it's, frankly, I can't speak for anybody else on the board, but speaking for myself, I think it's imminently fair. I don't think we're arbitrary capricious. I think it's the best way for your applicant to get what they want. Now, you could, again, roll the dice and say you wanna go down this other path, but you run the risk of not getting the approval of this board and not getting approval at town meeting.
Well, don't get angry at me because I'm asking for, I'm asking you to do something. I'm not saying that I'm misreading tea leaves or that I'm ungrateful for your time, but I'm just asking that you adopt the first option that the planner came up with and not do it by special permit because there's still some semblance of control with that. I mean, that's what you have in the other zones if you're gonna operate that type of a business. I mean, if that's fair for other zones, why wouldn't that be fair for the CDD3 zone?
Because you're assuming, you're assuming it would be passed and...
Well, if the board supports it, why wouldn't it pass?
Well, you'd be amazed at the number of people who came before us when we were hearing the things about the solar panels going up across the street and did not like that we were modifying the original Osgood plan. And now we've got a project going on to redo the Osgood plan, among other things, I think. And, you know, there's gonna be a fair number of people who say, don't make any changes.
Well, I'm not asking for a big change. I'm just asking you to recognize what's going on down there now.
You know the dynamics of town meetings. All you have to have is...
It's been a while since I've been to one, Mr. Kellogg, but it sounds like I'm gonna be at this one for whatever reason, whatever the reason might be.
We'll bring it up last, too.
You know, just to your point, you said this is how the other things are handled or whatever. I'm new to the board and reading this all pretty much for the first time in the last few months anyway. And when I was reading it, it seemed the permitted uses are things with no conditions. They're just listed as a permitted use, period. If there is some condition, it's handled as a special permit in all the other cases that I looked at in the bylaws. So that's why, as a special permit, it sort of makes sense because there's conditions.
Well, there were no conditions. That's what I'm saying.
But there are these conditions about screening and...
No, that's the third option. The option that I presented was just to allow landscaping and contracting in the zone without condition.
Yeah, but that doesn't make, that doesn't make...
Well, you have 18 other, you have 18 other businesses that are permitted down there without any conditions.
But that's the point of the night. That's the whole point.
The whole point is, we went in a different direction with this and what we're doing is we're pulling back, but we're not pulling back 100%. It's a compromise. It's a reasonable compromise.
I'm not willing to pull back 100% of themselves.
And I'm not willing to, I would never put something up there with no conditions.
Right, special permit.
Right in that area.
Yeah. So...
Even if the neighbors are doing the same thing?
The neighbors are what we call grandfathered.
Grandfathered.
Can't do anything about it. Wish we could.
But I mean, I think you're gonna get the exact outcome you want. That's why it's a little bit surprising you're, you know, I don't know if, you may have, yeah, we go in and we scrutinize things when we go through this process, but have we denied anything? I don't think so. We've gone through and we've said we'd like this, we'd like this, do this, do that. That's, I think that's entirely fair. That's entirely within our purview.
It's a risk. It's certainly a risk.
Well, it's a risk, and there are a lot of risks. I mean, you, I think you have a much bigger risk that if you decided not to go in this direction and you did it by right, that you would lose a town meeting.
I might. I might not.
You might not, but if you wanna roll the dice, go ahead and roll the dice. But, you know, I mean, I'm telling you, I think you're making a big mistake, so. And I'm trying, you know, I'm trying to be supportive because if you go the other way, basically, you're saying you wanna have a fight with the planning board. That's really what you're saying. And I really don't think you wanna do that.
I mean, just look at it. Either way, you're gonna have to rely on the town meeting saying, yes, we approve the board article. So that's a risk either way. We think it's a little higher risk if it's just a basic change in the thing. But let's say it isn't. You still are running the same risk of trying to get a warrant article through, okay?
I didn't hear any...
And if we support the article, you'll have a chance of getting it through.
No, I'm hearing that. What I didn't hear the first three meetings, other than from Lynn, who's been consistent, she was fairly opposed to a change down there...
I don't wanna have it all written on that road.
To allow, to allow landscaping as a use down there. I didn't hear that from the other members. I didn't hear it from you, Peter, or you, Laura, or you, Dave, or you, John. It was only in the last couple of meetings that, you know, I began to hear you talk about allowing it by special permit only with, without much other discussion because you wanna, you wanna make sure that you have control over it.
Well, you heard me say, you know, here's one landscaping guy, here's another landscaping guy, this might be a third. I mean, but they're right in a row. And obviously, I supported that.
And that's all I'm asking, is that it'll be allowed as a use.
But I think we're saying that, I mean, if it's a site plan, I mean, we've been pretty accepting of your concept. So, I mean, you're talking about coming back to the same board. I'm not gonna be gone in six months.
Can't count on me, I'm old.
I don't quite, I don't quite get it because I think what we're trying to express to you is that we'd like to be supportive and this is a path for us to be supportive and, so I just, I don't quite get it.
Well, I guess I was just hoping, Peter, that the board would be supportive of allowing it as a permitted use. By right. And then if you wanted to put some conditions on it, like the planner did with option one, it certainly, I think, it isn't like anybody's gonna go in there, if those can... conditions are on there, anybody's going to go in there and just right, run amok down there, because, I mean, it is what it is down there. It isn't, we're not talking about a big area and you know what exists down there. And so, that's all I was hoping, that you would do that. I thought that was a, a good compromise from what I was saying, was just a blank permitted use without any restrictions at all, those restrictions.
What is the difference there? I mean, if you're going to, if you say, I'll take a right of use, but with, you know, with that conditions and we're saying special permit.
With a special permit, then you get, there's a second step with that, Dave, that's the, that's the difference. That you have to come back then and get a special permit.
But, but Laura just said, it's us, and you've heard what we said before, this is not going to be a big problem for you. I, I, for the life of me, don't understand the, the thought process you're going through, because you're subjecting yourself, by the approach you're taking, to far more risk than the way we're suggesting for you.
Well, I, I don't want the risk, that's why.
You're, you're creating the risk.
That's why I came to the, that's why I came to the board in the first place. I want the board, I want the board.
Because you can pretty much read that this board is sympathetic to this request. We'll go into a hearing process and unless we see something that is totally off message, I don't think you're going to have a big problem. So that's why I don't get it.
I think you, I think what you're missing is the design standards, Gene did a great job on it, but design standards usually take us six to, months to a year to develop design standards. And it's a quick take on it and we're not going to, you know, we don't want to have to try to develop design standards for it right now, because we don't have time and we don't even know what you built.
How long is it?
You know, we don't usually just make up design standards and change a bylaw in weeks. And that's what you're asking us to do, in all honesty, because we, the warrant has to, this has to get out pretty quick, you know, already in February. So as far as saying you want it by right with design standards, none of us actually reviewed the design standards, none of us have gone and looked at the corridor yet. That would take us six months to do that.
I came two months ago.
You came two months ago, correct, but we weren't necessarily going to change our whole corridor district. We weren't saying we're going to change that district at that point.
I'm not really asking, I'm not really asking you to change it much either.
But it is, it's changing the, it's changing.
Well, yeah, I think, I think you understand at this point, I, I'm not sure how much more we can say. This is the path that we would prefer to go down. We think you're better off with that path and you're going to run into less resistance if you go down that path.
And I'll tell you, if you go for by right on the warrant article, I'll vote against it.
So that's, that's.
I think the confusion here is, correct me if I'm wrong, you're talking about the, the whole thing as a right would affect that whole corridor. It's not just your property.
That's right, it's the whole corridor.
So that's the issue we have, is to set up a whole, you're asking us to set up a whole new standard for a whole corridor, not just your property.
Well, I understand, but it's only a mile long.
But that's like saying a mile on Turnpike Street or a mile on any, we have responsibilities to other people that live in the area, whatever. It's not just a, it's a process. That, that's all. I mean, I don't think we're against what you're, you're trying to accomplish, but once again, you're, it's a whole corridor.
How long does a special permit take? Let's see if we go down.
Why don't you come up and identify yourself?
I'm Corey Law, 290 Stevens Street, my brother's Chad.
The, what you would go in is you would, you would apply, we would have a public hearing, it would take less, less than two months. So, it's really not very long.
And you're saying you're pretty much in favor of that, the whole?
Well, I mean, yes, we've been, we've been saying that all along.
What you built, I mean, do you have pictures of what you built?
Yeah, I mean, well, honest, I, I, I mean, from the very beginning, I was empathetic to what you're doing. I have no problem with your use of it.
Do you have to do another whole site plan and all that, or is it just kind of?
Well, I don't think you'll have to do a whole lot, because you, you, as long as you have the basic, simple drawings and everything, I mean, there's some work.
They have a building that, frankly, is 2050.
Forty by fifty.
Forty by fifty, but the issue with the lot is there's a lot of other structures, so they don't necessarily have dedicated parking line or things like that.
It's going to take a little bit of work, but it's, it's not going to be a lot.
No, I, I agree.
Again, it's an existing use, so it's, it's two hearings and done. Yeah, you'll have to spend a little bit of money, but not a lot.
The application is a month prior to the first hearing, because it needs to be noticed and things like that. So the first month is just eaten up by getting here and then we meet every, two weeks, so.
Just curious, could they do an application prior with public notice?
No, because you have to, it has to pass.
It has to pass, so that's, I think that's probably, that's the timing issue, that's sort of.
But no matter what, if it has to pass, you're going to have that timing issue.
You're going to have the savings.
But if you, but if you're putting another two months for the special permit beyond the, beyond the town meeting.
I just went through all the ones.
You're, you're, you're well into the landscaping season.
The Attorney General doesn't certify the vote until typically September.
Yeah, it doesn't matter, we can, we can go, I, in this case, I don't, I don't think it's a problem.
Did the Attorney General vote on the, on the warrant change, on the warrant change?
Usually certify it in September, by the time we throw back from them, but.
So some of it.
I would foresee an issue with that if we move ahead of that.
Yeah, so somewhat of, some of what you're hearing is, you know, a sense of urgency because of the nature of the business.
Yeah, but I.
Which isn't, which isn't necessarily.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're totally sympathetic to what you want, I don't think we'd have any major problems in what you're trying to do to get approved, so that's, that's all.
Without, without our input or without our advocacy to, to take a look at this issue, is there any sense that the, that the board would, would sponsor such a warrant article without that sort of happening, without me coming forward and talking with you about this, because?
Well, we're, I mean, based on what we have, we're willing to sponsor an article to, by special permit.
Okay.
So, and once it's our article, I mean, it's not that we're great seers, but, you know, over the last few years, you know, there's a certain amount of credibility and, you know, we can make a compelling case that we've looked into this and we're treating it very fair and it balances everybody's interests, as Laura said. And so we're protecting you, we'll protect the town and it'll get people who are potentially opposed to it off the issue, so.
And I know you have other, other issues, but let me just ask one last thing and for the board. With the option that the planner developed as option one, with that conditional language on it, do you think that that would not protect the town?
No.
No.
Absolutely not.
Certainly puts me in a different frame of mind, because it's a, we're, we're changing up, even if it's only a mile, the whole area, and that just raises the stakes. Okay, this is different. And it doesn't matter, if it's just a mile, it's fair. Whereas this is an opportunity, you know?
But it's not really the whole mile, because if you took the other three guys that are already doing it.
Sometimes you, you, you gotta accept three quarters of loaf. I mean, you know, it's going to get you to where you want to, I just, you know, I mean, I think our position on this is abundantly clear, we'll support one thing, but we won't support the other. So we're planning on putting it in as it is, so. So, okay. Thank you, guys. Sorry for being heated, I think it was a good discussion, but I think kind of we're on your side and that's why we're a little frustrated, so.
I hope you don't think I was heated. I hope no one thinks I was heated.
Yeah, okay, thank you. All righty.
So do you?
Yeah, we'll, if, we, right now, we are planning on submitting that article as Mr. Special.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you very much, thanks. Gene, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, so.
Back to.
We have 575 Oscar Street, which is the Continual Care Retirement Center.
Yeah, by the way, I just got some, and I'll send it to you, some of the trail plans for what's existing there, you know, between, through the, that property and through the Edgewood property. And what I'd like to do is, I would like to have in hand before town meeting their commitment, you know, they don't have to actually have the final thing, but they have to make a commitment that, that they will give us the access and that they'll, you know, the rest of the land in the new parcel has to be, you know, put under a conservation restriction. I mean, I think that's in actually the zoning, so that's not a problem, but the, the trail access piece, they got to agree to us, you know, they can send us a, a letter, it's fine, but I'd like to potentially share with them where the existing trails and ask them if it's their pleasure to, you know, to do it, do we want to do it over that specific thing or do we want to change the, where the location the trails are?
Okay.
Lynn, just one question, as I was thinking about this presentation. Does that conflict with any of the new stuff that your group?
It doesn't conflict, but, I mean, right now, we're only looking at the 40R, but we're actually looking at, should the 40R be expanded to other properties, has come up, because they're saying that you can't develop it as a 40R, is there better options for other sites in town that maybe?
Maybe even just right up the street for a bit, yeah.
And maybe, maybe you need to develop, maybe that's the last parcel in North Andover that gets developed, because it's so barren in between. You know, maybe that's why there's no drive, you know, after Butcher Boy, you get a nice retail center, it sort of drops off aggressively, you know, McClain's is a really small.
And across the street, there's like a big.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, that's it, for Genus, that's, maybe that's the more logical place to put the thing.
And it may be, because I mean, so, and the developer actually was at the meeting last evening and wasn't necessarily opposed to having another 40R district or something or expansion of it or similar. So that was a discussion. Another discussion, of course, is the saw. That is a big impact. The saw line stops and because there's no saw line, that stops some of the development.
But that would be, if we took the thing closer to the town. If we took the parcel that's closer to the town.
What do you mean by taking, I don't want to say.
Well, if the 40R.
Well, no, no, there's, there's three problems with it, is that you don't have a saw line past, what, Hokkaido is, where's saw line in? So Hokkaido, I think, or something right around there?
How does, does Oscar Landing go, or?
They have, they're on force main.
Oh. They go through Lawrence, too, I thought.
Yeah.
They go right to the DLST, so it's a dedicated line.
Dedicated, so, so because there is no saw line, is the hindrance of the development along the corridor there, the CDD3, not being developed, not allowing the 40R to be developed?
So would they, would, in order to do the, if, if they did the 40R, would they have to create a separate saw line? Is that what they, thing is, they couldn't use the existing one there?
No, they can on that parcel, they can use their existing saw, force main for the 40R.
So they could?
They have capacity.
So it's a question of everything.
Everybody else in the neighborhood, you know, that doesn't have, isn't being really upscale developed, because there is no saw lines.
Right, like what we were just talking about.
Yeah, so is that driving the neighborhood, so it'd develop, if you bring the saw line in, and you develop, do all the rest of the parcels get developed and then they have this only, this the last parcel in town, because it's so enormous, you know, and now people are willing to take it on.
Yeah.
You know, and that may be the, what happens.
Okay.
You know, so, so it doesn't, doesn't change it, but, you know, it's an, you know, we already talked, it's an 11-month process just to review the 40R for next town meeting. You know, just, you know, do we make any zoning changes, you know, so to make a zoning change to this district, besides by special permit, I think would impact it.
Yes, but there's, there's nothing that'll come up from.
No, no.
Good.
No, so.
Okay.
That's basically the discussion, is they're getting saw.
Was there a big crowd at the meeting?
Um, there was three residents of town, the five committee members and three of the representatives from the property owner, so.
How do you spell saw? Because I was like, when is she talking?
S-W-A-H, what's your problem?
S-O-A-R, saw.
God, I've become, you know, lost, don't you? You're right.
Did she drop here?
Yeah.
Any close captioning at the bottom?
Okay, back to Edgewood, is there anything more that we need to do there? I mean, I think we're okay with that.
Okay, as long as everybody, about language, agrees with the language, any questions, concerns. I, we're getting close to submitting the warrant articles and my thought was, our first meeting in April, have the public hearing, which means it gets noticed the two weeks prior to that.
Yeah, that's fine.
So certainly by the next meeting, we need to make sure we're comfortable with everything that's going to be submitted.
John, I, I think you may have commented on this, but I didn't quite catch it. By ver, you know, we'll get a letter that says, yes, we'll give you variance for the trails. That's great.
Or a, well, a, a, an easement for the trails.
An easement, an easement, right. But I didn't quite catch, where is it sort of enforced that the rest goes into conservation?
I would, I was thinking two ways. At first, my thought was that we, we get them to put that in a letter, too, which I think is probably worth putting in the letter anyway, but I think the way the bylaw is written is that all that land has to go into a conservation restriction anyway. And if it's not, then we definitely need the letter, put that in the letter. So, I mean, they're going to do that, so why don't we just plan on putting it in the letter? There's, there's two things we want from them is, you know, is to get the, the trail easement and we ought to share the plans first and then we ought to get them to make a commitment that they will provide a conservation restriction of the rest of the property.
Great. And that doesn't need to be embedded in here? Yeah.
Yeah. Thanks. There, yeah, I, I think Hedstrom actually already did say it, he certainly said it personally to me, so.
He said it here, but.
Yeah, well, let's just get it from them, but I think, I got from the, the Trails Committee, I got the, all of the actual trails, so.
And so you would like the ability to maybe relocate those trails?
No, it's more, this is, it, it, the way that we go is, look, we, we want to work with you on finalizing easement for the trails, which you agreed to, which, by the way, you should put in the letter, but this is where our existing trails are, are you okay with keeping them where they are?
Okay, keep where they are.
Or do you want them moved? And if they say it's okay to keep them where they are, then we'll say, we can go back to the Trails people and say, we're just going to keep the existing ones and then when they give us the access easement, they have to reference those documents.
So they have some boat storage there and it's possible that they may want the trail to not go through the boat storage, which I think would be fine.
Which would be fine.
But that's why this, I think, is a good exercise, to go back and forth, because they may want to route around.
Yeah, I think they're going to have to run around the new buildings a little bit.
No, I meant.
Well, they're further down.
I meant where the boat storage is.
Yes, it's actually one of the steep part of the building, so.
They've got fifteen boats right on the water and that's where the trail goes through, so, I mean, it's fine with me, but they may want to loop around that, just so they don't have people going through where the boats are.
Just a silly question, I mean, do, do the residents?
I was going to ask that, too. The Edgewood people are using boats.
It's an Edgewood boat storage area.
So who, who uses the boats?
People at Edgewood.
Really?
I see them all the time out there.
Awesome.
Yeah, they're inspirational, paddling along.
That's great.
Do you wear a cap when you go out?
Always, Red Sox.
I was thinking something more nautical. I was thinking something more nautical.
Sailor's cap.
One of my friends was asking about you says, "Do you have a harbor master?"
Yes, you do.
Well, I said, "Yes," and he's a good guy, so way when you see him.
So we did, right? The only other one is Hitching Post Road. We are going to have a warrant article for street acceptance. That's the one that was a settlement agreement as Ari did sign, so the last piece of this is to bring it to town council. So we provided that. Carol McGraw has reviewed the language as well as Tim O'Leary.
I have to exclude myself. My daughter's girl.
So again, I just gave you a draft of that.
Do we have a date for when we're going to do the warrants, the public hearings?
So I thought the first meeting in April is typical, and so it will be noticed two weeks prior. The legal ad has to run for two weeks, so there'll be two more meetings technically if you want to review anything. There is somebody that's requested to come for a discussion item at the next meeting who lives at 10 Boston Road, which is in our two district. He's got Village Residential and Village Commercial on the other side, so I believe he's going to request your opinion on a zoning change that would rezone his to Village Residential. But that's on the next...
I'm not going to be here next meeting because I'm going to be in Denver, so...
So potentially, if he comes forward, that will be next week, and that, again, based on your feedback, may or may not be another article.
Yeah, okay.
Gene, are we going to talk about any of the things under...
Peter, if you'd like to give an update on the presentation?
We're working on the informational mailer again. So waiting some more emails.
I'm waiting to do the Photoshop.
And thank you.
Black on.
Thank you.
It's going to be snazzy.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's going to be great.
Yeah.
And then we're still doing the water, you know, the data of the raw lake water testing. So that's been done with DPW and conservation, planning, myself, and they have some initial results, and I don't yet know when it's going to be brought before here, but we're still working on that.
That's awesome. If, once we get that, I think that's a big deal.